We have a composting site. I mean, if you guys ride around once in a while and go like I do all around, these properties are looking good. People are cleaning the yards up because they have a place to pig. And we just, this last weekend, we had a hundred and four ozer rush one over there. And most of them were ninety-five percent of them is East Fallfield.
Was there a dollar figure with that?
What's that?
Was there a dollar figure yet with the rental for it that we get?
Usually it's a, it's usually like five dollars per ton or something like that. But I think last year, I think we got, I think we got close to four thousand dollars or so back. This year it'll be close to probably five or so. And uh... Just to let everybody know, Fairview Road, Goose Town Road, West Chester Road, South Towne, we've got that completed. Uh, Dayton, uh, almost Dayton did an excellent job. Then two day period, we had it all done. We got by your house and that was awesome. Mill ups all re-done. That's pretty much all I have for now.
Tag, we were discussing a little bit with the part-time grass cutting for next year. I was just looking at your numbers here for hours. Where are you accounting for mowing other than township roads? Are you putting that in parks?
Probably pretty much parks and uh...
Like when you do developments, like any of the developments that we're responsible for?
Yeah, well, the uh...
Where you put those hours?
Whole park area and all the common ground around the back of the, of the park.
Are you putting those hours in parks? Anything that, so anything you're using the brush or going along the roads, that's roads obviously?
That's roadside, yeah.
And then anything dealing with any, any open space that we have to cut or anything like that? You're putting that in that park number?
That's correct.
Okay.
Because if anybody ever has time, you know, supervisor has time, I'll take you out and show you. Steve, you know what we've got there.
Yeah, well, it's real.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a, there's lots of people over there.
Tag, we would like to get a list from you with what mowing that you do. Like what, what's being done on a monthly basement basis on the summer months? You know, what's, what's being done? Like any development or any, any area that is substantial that takes hours? Because we're looking at the, the part-time help for next year. So, okay.
Okay, the fire department, all the reports are in the back. I think there's somebody here, do you have anything?
No.
On the fire department side, okay. Uh, Park and Rec is in the back. Uh, Park and Rec, any comments or uh... All up, okay? Reports in the back for everybody to read.
How, how's it going with the membership of Park and Rec?
As good as the board is.
What's, as good as the board is supervising? I gotcha. So you have what, three members?
We got a solid three, but the other two are just kind of...
Solid three's good for a game, yes.
So, we're trying to, you know, move forward with some plans and stuff.
Okay.
For near future, but uh...
Are you involved with Park and Rec? I mean, as far as the Park Day?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Uh, well, we're almost to the public participations. Yeah, well, there's no motion right now, so we can, you can bring it up during the public comment, which will be up here very soon. Uh, if we could bump up any openings on our pages as well, you know, vacancies. Just kind of do that every few weeks, just to make sure it's at the top. Uh, historical commission, no reports submitted? Anything to go over, Mr. Rhodes?
No.
For the historical?
No. I think Tag mentioned both of them unfortunately. Vacancies want to be come up in the historical because of Jeff, but there's a Garth on hand. So we'll add a couple vacancies, maybe two, I don't know. Uh, we didn't have a quorum last time, so that's the reason why. In reference to what he stated about the covered bridge, uh, there is uh... When he was talking about the little bridge area, there isn't being that. That was a spill up over when the, the crick run over runs. There used to be a little, you can see the right of way of stone there, and it comes on that little bridge. And with Andy Denon's office, that, all that wall should be replaced or repainted. The wall is basically, the cap is falling off. And uh, and I did mention to Tag, this is nothing new that I didn't just bring it up on it. But in reference to that road, we spent, I, I don't know, quite a bit of money on that road there along with a speed bumps to nowhere. There's, I think there's about five of them going down through there. But even that road is cracking up. And that road is only done a couple of years ago, especially on the side where the guardrails are. The water runs over in the number fours and then what he's talking about, they put a bunch of number fours down along the wet areas. That's where the staging was for the project. And that's what they're asking for us to get the number fours. We can use some of that fours right along the guardrail and try to fix that up. Because it needs gutter work there to go into the inlet still. That road there, you know, basically some of the pipe in there was never replaced. All the pipes there, there's a gavenite breakdown where the old house used to be on the turn bag. And that's a, that's a steel pipe, all right? So when that bridge was done, they should have put either a plastic in there or concrete. Gavenite pipe rusts out on the bottom. And there's going to be water being able to go into the pipe. You can't have dirt coming out there and the water runs across the road, the purpose of the pipe. And then that's sort of for the water to go through and come out the pipe into the crick. So that's, the project is in. The gentleman who's doing the bridge, uh, he mentioned about unlimited weight. If any of you have been down, uh, Downington, Harmony Hill Bridge. Same contractor did that bridge. That was a, you know, and also Harmony Hill has one way. You can't go back up that road there. That's a one-way. And there's a weight limit on there and there's a height. And I don't know, you know, just because they built it up doesn't mean we should have a fourteen ton or even less on that. Because it's not much, it's old stone and the mortar's falling in. You can have a steel beam, they had steel beams underneath the covered bridge. All that did is catch the braid coming down. So uh, and that's one reason why they did away with that. That's something that Penn Doc did. So you can put the weight limits on anything, but if you don't have the enforcement of that weight limit, you know, that gentleman that destroyed that bridge and also the one up in Phoenixville, the truck went through and the truck went through there instead of going up eighty-two. He made the wrong turn and took out the bridge. They called him down here at our, uh, bridge down in Mortonville there. That's where they called him at. But you have to get Parksburg B O T to come out. So hopefully someday our police department can have their own B O T and somebody that can enforce it.
I think we do.
We have Simmons, sorry.
Right now you use Parksburg.
No.
Well, that's how you came down there that year.
Because of the weights.
Yeah, well...
We need to use our scales. I don't have scales.
No, I'm just saying you don't. That's the reason why Parksburg came down and weighed that truck.
Because we didn't have it at that point.
Yeah, well, and actually I know about weighing. When you run up on the wire, you can jerk the vehicle too. We did that with a crane and that messes up portable wares. Thank you.
Chief, did we get any funds from, from that damage? Are we eligible for any funds or did we have to...
We didn't. Uh, the citation itself was fourteen thousand dollars. It was over fourteen thousand dollars. And the guy spent over a month in jail.
Didn't have the money anyhow.
Treasurer's report. I'll make a motion to approve the August thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen treasurer's report as presented. Questions or comments?
So finally about mid-year, but how are we doing?
Seems to be on track.
Okay.
There's nothing hugely varying by the time so far?
All those in favor, aye? Motion carries four zero. Make a motion to approve the August two thousand and sixteen minimum authorizations for one hundred and ten checks in the aggregate amount of three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, seventy-eight dollars and sixty-three cents for the period of August twenty-fourth, two thousand and sixteen through September twenty-seventh, two thousand and sixteen. Second. Questions or comments? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four zero. Other treasurer's business? Please, thank you.
Okay, the two thousand and seventeen minimum municipal obligation, or they call it the M M O for East Fallfield Township for a police pension plan and non-uniform pension plan. Um, I did those calculations included in the board's package, should be one for each. That is the standard legal notice, I believe, that P M R S requires us to make sure that the board is fully aware of the pension obligation for the coming year. The two thousand and seventeen police M M O, I think we estimated this year to be about eighty-nine thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars. But again, we do receive state supplemental pension aid. So a lot of, most of the time it offsets.
How much supplement?
Uh, it's not exact. It's a, it's a calculation off of, I believe, in Act two oh five. I'm sorry, I don't understand it as much.
Do you have a percentage?
Most of the time it's about the equal matching. I, I don't think, I think last year they sent in eighty-nine thousand or ninety thousand and our bill was around ninety to ninety-two thousand.
Oh, okay.
So it covers ninety to ninety-five percent of it, but I just, I don't know the exact calculations to determine what they'll send us.
Do you know the percentage of our, how funded we are on those?
How much we are funded on?
Yeah, like where we, I know at one point there was like ninety-five percent, ninety percent, somewhere around there.
I'm not sure.
I mean, that's not, may, necessary for this document. Be interesting to know, just to make sure we're still on board with that.
Um, the next thing had to do with audit company proposal discussion. I'm not sure if the board had brought back their proposals. Mingus Katuski and company, they have been doing our audits for us since two thousand and ten. They gave us a one, two, and three-year pricing. Do you want me to give you the breakdown or...
How much more is it, is there an increase in this year?
Um, I think it's a couple hundred dollars increase from this year. Barbara Kane Thornton came in around, probably around five hundred dollars less per year roughly on it. So Barbara Kane Thornton did ask if the board would like them to come in and present. I said I would get back to them after this meeting.
What municipalities were you in?
I'll have to go back and see.
At least did you remember who came in?
I think there was like six or seven who responded and then six out of the sevens that Barbara Kane Thornton...
Were they surrounding or, or is it just, that was just a kind of... This is hers. So City of Coatesville, East Calhoun, Honeybrook, West Coast, and those are the closest ones. Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't...
I wouldn't mind a presentation.
Yeah, sure, presentation's fine. Yeah.
See if they maybe can do the next workshop? Because it sounds like we have some other things to do to be able to do that legally anyway, so we can't vote on it.
Um, first Niagara, which is where we have the majority of our bank accounts, is changing to Key Bank. I didn't know whether the board wanted to stick with what will be Key Bank. Within the next six months, from what I understand, we will officially have to change over and update our checks, our account numbers, the routing numbers, and change all the information on the A C H deposits. So if the board was interested in another bank, um, now would probably be the time to look towards it. We have roughly around two million dollars in the nine accounts, so...
I wouldn't even know which one to wrap the bad nuts.
The board has time to think on it if the board did decide that they wanted to do that though.
So it's roughly six months before...
Roughly about six months from mid-October, I believe is when the change over official.
Just remind us in a month.
Um, I wanted to remind the board that East Fallfield Park Day will be on Saturday, October eighth. It'll be from ten a.m. to four p.m. It is a rain or shine event. We are still soliciting assistance from people, needing people helping as early as nine a.m. And then did one of the board members want to speak in the opening ceremony?
I did it last year, I can, I can speak to you, I'll be there.
I also have a Park Day sign for each of you for your homes if you're interested. And then under new business, I believe Park and Rec, they put together a survey and they put together a little article for the newsletter. I didn't know whether the board needed to review surveys. I just didn't know.
I wouldn't mind seeing it, just, what's it, what's it about? People's interest in the park.
People's interest in the park. They put together a really comprehensive survey. I can forward that on to the board.
That'd be great, sure. Yeah, I don't have a problem with that, I just, I wouldn't mind seeing it to see what...
Bonnie, you can send them the link I sent you, we can go later on and check it out.
Absolutely.
Excellent.
Um, I did want to let the board know that I finally made headway with Horizon Business after almost a year. We got a hundred and eighty-six dollars in paper media charges finally waived. In the future, it'll save us three hundred and sixty dollars a year split between administration and police.
Excellent, nice work.
And then the last thing I have is Mutual of Omaha, which is our life insurance and accidental death and dismemberment policy. They sent us a bill with increased rates of almost fifteen percent. So I called Mutual and pitched a fit because there was no notice, no information was sent to us. Thankfully, or supposedly we have a broker, which has never been contacted with me since I've started here. I didn't know we actually had a broker. Mutual of Omaha verbally said that they will undo the rate increase and freeze our rates at last year's rate, but as of now, I have nothing in writing. But as long as they take it off the bill, that's fantastic. Does the board want me to contact our broker or do we want to switch to just dealing directly with Mutual of Omaha?
Sounds like uncost, yeah, I mean, cost and it sounds like the broker's not doing us any good anyway. So that's the point. Just having a middleman, if Mutual of Omaha worked directly with us and it cost us, I'm all for that. And you cut out the middleman and help us speak.
They just requested that we let them know if we want to go direct with them. That way they, next year they will send us the rate information and stuff ahead of time.
Did you speak with the broker at all?
I, I didn't know whether I should contact them or not, but no, I guess.
Interesting to know to speak with them, because sometimes companies give such a discount to brokers because they show so many policies that we deal directly. I mean, we're in a pool with a broker for, I mean, so interesting with, maybe it's a quick conversation letting them know like under the deal that we have with that broker, it's gone up fifteen percent.
Without the broker.
Yeah, exactly, and uh, that the direct contact with the company that they're willing to waive that. Though they didn't say they would sustain that, right? They'll waive it for this year.
It sounded like it was, it would be a one-year rate freeze.
Okay, so then it's going to jump fifteen. So maybe that broker is able to negotiate better for us. It'd be an interesting conversation. You know, see what...
Yeah, that's true.
Over here. And that's all I have.
Uh, any new business from anybody on the board?
Just one thing, with, I was speaking with Lisa prior to the meeting. You know, as we look at the minutes and then compare it to other municipalities, I mean, Lisa's putting in a lot of time into the minutes. Interesting. One thing we could do, we could set up a video camera here like other municipalities and just tape the entire meeting. We could post it. And that way Lisa could possibly do minutes similar to other municipalities that were just a lot shorter. It's just a basic bill, it's a public comment, and it's not such detail. And then the residents have the ability to either request the tape through, you know, wait to know or they can watch the video that we can upload to our website. And the reason being to bring this up is the benefit that, I mean, Lisa pointed out that she would have more time to do something else or learn other skills that can help the office. The minutes I've compared to other municipalities are a lot. I mean, some municipalities, it's just two pages of just how the votes went and public comment. It's not such detail, but if we're able to still deliver a video of the entire meeting that residents can watch if they're interested in knowing the whole thing, then that'll allow us to use residents' money and payments to be able to do more things.
I'd be fine with that. I think we talked about the video, having our own before. Maybe just need to look into the cost and having it set up and how, uh, there's any vacant requirements for posting in or anything like that. I'd like to hear from that.
Sure.
So I mean, if we want to look into the cost of the camera and the setup, you know, more, I'd be fine with that. And yeah, and if that, you know, helps you, that Lisa, and makes you more efficient and you'll work, I'm all for that.
So just put it in for the budget for next year?
Yeah, possibly. I mean, this stuff's so cheap these days, I mean, as far as digital, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, we'll get it in somewhere this year. At least the buyer can play around with it and see how we want to do it, make sure there's... We talked about it with Mike, I think, before, there's no legal issues really. The posting of it maybe, but we'll have to see what we can do for that. Because that takes some space too, so...
It does, but I mean, there's so many websites now, so much free space.
That's true.
And we're retaining what we have to lawfully, you know, with the games and then, uh, what we're supposed to put in the minutes. I just noticed a lot of other municipalities...
Yeah, I've seen that too.
It's just really, it would give Lisa a lot more time to do something else and we're still delivering a better product as far as the video. And then we still have the minutes and Lisa is able to do more things, so...
Sounds good to me.
Were you able to pull down these more box from upstairs to start shifting through the...
I don't, I don't go upstairs anymore.
I understand that, but I mean, has a, has a box come down at all or is it just...
No, we have worked on it. I am taking a record retention and disaster planning course on Thursday. And I'm hoping, because it's put on through K S A P, I'm hoping they'll be able to narrow down the retention schedule for us. But I will update the board for next meeting.
Okay. Because as we talked about, like if we just bring one box down a month, at least we're chipping away what's up there. So once you discover what you have to retain and then we can start working on that. And then that can reduce the costs in our budget for next year if we're supposed to, uh, do the catalog.
Any other new business? Any, uh, poll of participation?
Can I participate?
Go ahead, Mr. Rhodes.
Just a couple items. Number one, the video, I remember early this year I was able to go on the website here. I guess maybe City of Coatesville, somebody must have been videotaking this because I was able to see the actual meeting. There were like four or five...
Yeah, that wasn't through, through us or through the website?
That was unofficial, I guess that's...
Correct.
Secondly, with regards to this Park Day, I drove through the park the other day. I think it'd be a good idea to put some signs out there, asking for volunteers for the park commission, particularly if, if we're going to have a large number of people there. The individuals would be very interested to serve on that. I know it's always difficult to get volunteers. And I don't know if there are any extra one of these signs around, but I know the one that I saw is wrapped around a post as you drive in and almost not even noticeable. But it's something to consider, you think, with that coming up. The other item, a couple thing of money, money, money. The M M O, that's pension, is that like eighty-nine thousand dollars is due?
For the police pension in two thousand and seventeen.
And what is, what's the offset? Where do you get the other money to offset that?
Um, I just know it's a line item state supplemental pension. I believe it comes in from the state. I'm not sure what, it comes off of an Act two oh five. There's a whole bunch of sheets that have to be filled out, but I'm not sure what entity exactly reverses us.
The taxpayers will have to pay that then, is that what they reimburse for it?
Correct. So like about ninety to ninety-five percent of the police pension plan that is due has matching and offset funds for it.
And then lastly, as a budget, I looked at two thousand and seventeen projected budget here and I'm sure everybody, the board goes through that very closely. But I sort of looked at this and, uh, there's going to be an increase projected in revenue of three point seven percent increase in expenditure of about eight point five percent. But my concern is I, I know, I know it's a sensitive issue with the police. Not only the police department, there's forty-two percent of overall budget. And for the second-class township, I'm not sure how that relates to other second-class townships. Whether that's the right percentage. But it's going to keep going up and up. And I wonder, is there perhaps a certain lid to this? And I noticed I go over some of the last year, the increases, they are substantial for salaries and I'm sure even for the pension and healthcare, et cetera. So it's really getting to be, again, I know it's a sensitive issue and I know we underestimate the value of the, of the police. I know they're here for safety purposes and we all appreciate that. That's my three minutes. I had three items.
Yeah.
So in any event, I would, I would just, uh, hope that the, the board would look closely at this and, and see where we can economize. I'm not sure we need all the officers that we have. I'm sure the chief would think differently on that. But we're getting to be rather pricey, so this is my comment.
Uh, Mr. Rhodes?
I don't know, this is new business. I think this is old business for the last four or five months. I think I did bring it up, bring it up in the public meeting now. It's in reference of Route eighty-two. It used to be Thomas Carpet is a residential. And that's been going back maybe thirty-five years ago, maybe forty. And it's residential, that means somebody sold carpet, Mr. Thompson, Thomas used to sell carpet from his house. Right next door, it used to be a Dairy Queen. Now it's, uh, uh, mirrors. He used to be on the planning commission. He has a striping and painting outfit there, you see his. But it's gone back to Jim Derby's house. And I brought it up to Mr. Lamb, I brought it up to Mr. Porter, Steve, all of you. And it's been five months. There's over a hundred cars back there. Water, it's been raining, water's in them, biscuit is, it's not just pickup trucks. These trucks are five, six tons enclosed trucks sitting back there. There's a lift out front to pick up cars, sitting right out front there. That's not for, for that type of business, all right? And I don't know what we have to do in reference to the residents coming there, other myself, to come here and get the board. You, you have zoning officer and evidently this is passed on, all right? It doesn't take five months to get rid of a tire. Tag went up there next town on that road back there and picked up tires along with the police department. Somebody dumped tires off. This guy has tires back there, all right? Nothing being done on it. All right, so I don't know what more I can do other than maybe, it's a good idea to have...
If I can, just real quick, I, as an update on that, I did reach out to Rob about it. Supposedly he went and looked, but I got to follow up with him and see where it's at. I have to follow up with him on the junkyard too, because the tires were covered and were supposed to be removed, but they're not covered anymore and they're not removed. So I'm following up with him this week on those two areas, because he really hasn't gotten back to me about one.
You go past Brian's old junkyard, so you can see that.
Yeah.
And as you travel towards that, if you head down to the pizza place or something like that, make a little right there at mirrors and you can get back there and see that mess. I mean, you think Brian's a bad, this is even worse. He don't have junk cars out there, big trucks all over there. The second issue was in reference, and this has been two or three meetings ago. I know Tag used to ask me where the line was in South Coatesville. You can see where Coates, South Coatesville came up to the Goose Town Road and tire and chip there's, you know. And the next year they redid it. Well, we're mowing down in the south, if that's the case. I always thought the crick was the line. But evidently South Coatesville thinks it's up to Goose Town Road, all right? I asked you a couple of meetings ago, it doesn't take that long to get a survey. Mortonville's a known incident, you know, down once you down, down where the guy has about eight, eight signs and he only paid for one, Law Road is a little culvert, that's the boundary line, all right? All I ask is have the survey, all right? Seeing down where Carol lives, or you can see the line there where the township ends. But there's no, you know, you're spending two or three thousand dollars for a plan that the planning commission. We should not be mowing other townships if that's the case. If that's not the case, then we should be mowing it. But we've been mowing that for, ever since that started here, all right? And we don't just use bank millers. They use finish millers on a lot of the...
Wrap it up, buddy.
All right, pardon?
I said you need to wrap it up, you're three-minute peeper, one oh. I gotta be fair to everybody.
Well, okay, well, I just had them two issues that I hope you can act on. Thank you, Steve.
Mr. Rhodes, I hope you have your hand up.
Um, yes, um, on the...